Also opened this mental health office. For more information on services, call the Mexican consulate at 213-351-6826, or visit www.saludmental-lasandales.com. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The waiting game begins. For people who applied for affordable housing, 20,000 lucky people will be chosen at random. And as Gil Reyes reports, one nonprofit made the application process easy while continuing to support other causes year-round.
Helping low-income residents find affordable housing is just one of the missions at South LA's Community Coalition. They recently helped people apply for the Section 8 Housing Lottery, a sort of super lotto for government housing. And why did you come out here today?
Because I only need to be the one. I know they're accepting so many persons for the waiting list, but I just want to be that one within the 20,000.
Gail Gordon qualified to apply. If chosen by lottery, her monthly rent could total just 30% of her monthly income, a blessing in LA's expensive housing market.
Preference is given to those who live or work in the city of LA and also to veterans. And so people can apply online. The vast majority of people will do it that way. However, we also have an option where people can call into a call center.
But Community Coalition members say many people in South LA didn't have the technology to apply online from home, so the organization opened its doors, lending computers and application advice free of charge.
Oftentimes, folks in our communities may have a computer but may not have internet access, and so we want to make that process easy.
Year-round, Community Coalition champions political causes like improving education and job creation. With Section 8 applications over, Gail Gordon will wait and see if she makes the waiting list for affordable housing. 20,000 people will be chosen by lottery.
I'm very hopeful. I very much could use the services, and I appreciate Community Coalition for having this available for the community.
The earliest acceptances could be notified as early as February. The latest ones could be notified as late as 10 years from now. Just goes to show how much needed Section 8 housing is in Los Angeles. Reporting from Community Coalition headquarters, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The housing authority of the city of LA opened up the application process for the first time in 13 years. More opportunities for affordable housing lotteries could open up depending on state and federal funding. Immigrant groups continue to push back as they rally for sanctuary city status for immigrants in the city of Angels. Anna Marcos brings us this report from One Town Hall.
A full house at this town hall meeting near downtown LA. Residents, immigrant groups, and city leaders, including Councilmember Gil Sadio, met to help rev up the push for sanctuary city status in LA.
The support for a sanctuary ordinance in this city is wide and is deep.
We know we're going to fight for our DACA, right? DACA has got to be preserved.
The T-shirts here seem to match the feisty mood. Groups like Indivisible Highland Park and ACLU People Power rallied for more protections for immigrants. Most residents here want the LAPD to disengage from federal law enforcement authorities and offer no cooperation in the Trump administration's crackdown on immigrants.
Police ought to be protecting the entire community and treating them equally.
Some protested the divide between rich and poor immigrants.
If you work hard and contribute to the economy and send your kids to school and obey the laws, that's not good enough. But if you have $500,000 cash, bam, you put it on the table, you've got a green card. There's something really deeply wrong with this immigration system.
LA is now in the process of achieving sanctuary city status, but it's not there yet. These immigrant supporters plan to keep on pushing until sanctuary status begins to offer immigrants some protections. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Mayor Eric Garcetti says the LAPD already enforces Special Order 40, which bans LAPD officers from detaining people based on their immigrant status. City leaders are working on a legal fund to help immigrants on deportation matters. Would you know what to do during a major earthquake? People worldwide practice protection during this month's Great Shakeout. And as Gil Reyes reports, LA is taking extra precautions with an earthquake warning system expected to be online soon.
Kids at LA's Natural History Museum participate in an international earthquake drill. Millions of people taking part in the Great Shakeout, where people drop, cover, and hold on.
That means to drop to the ground, hold your head and your neck with your arms, and hold on until the shaking stops.
LA City Fire Chief Ralph Torasis warns Angelinos to get ready and to know the drill inside and out before the big one hits. Mayor Eric Garcetti says September's devastating Mexico City quake underscores the importance of retrofitting LA's buildings. Concrete and wood frame structures with weak supports are most likely to fall first. Though much work lies ahead to retrofit every LA building that needs it, hundreds have been upgraded in recent years.
More than 2,000 other structures are already underway for their retrofits, and those are critical. But we also are investing in the early warning system.
The mayor referring to Shake Alert, a smartphone messaging system warning you before a quake arrives in your area. Shake Alert does this by tracking seismic waves. It can also disable machines during a quake.
It can stop trains in their tracks, halt elevators, and drop you off at the nearest floor so you're not stuck there. Even trigger backup generators so you don't get stuck in the dark. And I've made a commitment to delivering this by 2018 to all Angelinos via our smartphones, and I intend to keep that promise.
Back at the California Science Center, officials set up this mock living room to simulate a 7.8 magnitude quake.
It's been said before, but it is worth repeating. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. For some potentially life-saving tips, log onto the website, readyla.org. Reporting from Exposition Park, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
In California alone, more than 10 million people took part in the Great Shakeout. Expect to see first responders at the Los Angeles International Airport arriving on bicycles. That's right. Rasha Goel explains.
A six-month pilot program is helping provide additional quick response at LAX to handle medical emergencies. It's all part of the new Bike Medic program, where instead of sending an ambulance, cycle teams will arrive on the scene and assess the situation.
By using bicycles, the initial response is expected to take less time. By having fire department personnel arrive so quickly, they are able to perform medical assessments and treatment without the need of sending a fire engine and rescue ambulance into the central terminal area.
Officials say majority of emergency medical service incidents at LAX do not result in ambulance transports to the hospital. Therefore, sending fire companies and rescue ambulances is not time or cost efficient. And having a paramedic on the bike does have its advantages.
Bikes are great for accessibility. Having the diesel rig out here in the horseshoe and waiting in traffic, it could be a cardiac arrest or diabetic emergency, and that patient's not giving the highest level of care. On the bikes, we're able to get on scene within minutes or seconds, depending if we're on a call or first waiting on standby.
The Bike Medic program has been around for more than 15 years, but what makes the pilot program unique is the addition of a nurse practitioner and a firefighter paramedic. These resources will help in handling small issues to critical medical emergencies.
The nurse practitioner has an expanded scope of practice above the level of paramedic.
In addition, hours of operation of bike medics have been extended.
We now have two bike medics staffed at LAX Tuesday through Friday.
And with the holidays around the corner, travelers can be assured they will be taken care of. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
This pilot program will be assessed after the six-month period to determine whether it will be extended or not. Some students got the day off from school for a day of play at the park. Hope is, this leads to healthy habits. Gil Reyes has more from Silver Lake at Councilman Mitchell Farrell's Fitness Challenge. Gil?
Well, Yana, the point of the entire day is to get young people thinking about exercise and physical fitness as an everyday occurrence and not just something they do every once in a while. The special guest of honor at today's event, an Olympic gold-winning gymnast. Are you up for the fitness challenge? These fifth graders are, led by Olympic gold medalist Nastia Lukin. You may remember her gold-winning gymnastics performance from the 2008 Olympic Games in Beijing.
Wow! We're just going to be active today, and I'm going to kind of lead a warm-up and then go through some of the stations with them and just teach them the basics of it.
An entire school day dedicated to exercise. It's all part of Councilman Mitchell Farrell's Fourth Annual Fitness Challenge, students participating in gymnastics, yoga, and running drills.
We know that in California and Los Angeles, we have an out-of-proportion percentages of childhood obesity, and so we really need to do something about that. You know, if you don't feel good, and you don't eat right, and you don't exercise, then it really does diminish your quality of life.
Councilman O'Farrell, a former Oklahoma State Champion gymnast, underwent a hernia operation three months ago. He recovered in virtually no time, and credits that to a lifetime of healthy living. This is his first attempt at a gymnastics flip since the operation.
Just goes to show that health and fitness can come at any age.
And how are the kids doing?
I'm with my friends from school, and it's just really fun.
It's pretty good. It's probably my favorite field trip I've ever had.
Hoping the day leads to a lifetime of physical fitness. In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Fifth graders taking part in the challenge attend Glen Phyllis, Ramona Grant Union, and Fletcher Drive Elementary Schools. An annual festival showcases local artists with inspiring messages, one that brings the community together. Rasha Goel has more.
Where community businesses, neighbors from throughout the city of Los Angeles convene here at the La Brea Tar Pits to enjoy the sun, have fun. There's food trucks, there's game booths, there's performances. It's just a great day.
Councilman David Rue was among the Angelinos at the 15th Annual Tar Fest, an event showcasing some of the region's finest emerging artists, performers, and cultural innovators on the historic Miracle Mile.
Music's been great. The food was really good. It's just a nice atmosphere, and I love the tar pits.
Anything that has to do with community, community involvement, you know, we love to participate. The neighborhood comes out and supports.
The festival was for the entire family with activities and a little something for everyone. The Free Music and Arts Event has been put on by a nonprofit, Launch LA for the past 15 years.
Launch LA believes exposure to the arts enhances quality of life and strengthens community.
There's lots to do. There are people painting and lots of kids around, and it just has a really nice vibe to it.
With an eclectic mix of arts, it's one place you're open to create to the beat of your own drum. I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
Some traffic lanes that had been removed in Playa Vista will soon be restored, and community members celebrate two beloved venues within the city. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti and City Councilmember Mike Bonin announced a plan to restore traffic lanes on several roads in Playa del Rey and deliver a series of new safety features to help protect the lives of motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists. The move came after Garcetti and Bonin asked the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to immediately begin restoring lanes that had been removed on Culver Boulevard, Jefferson Boulevard, and Pershing Drive, and to install new strong traffic safety measures to be completed over the next several months. The new safety measures include new crosswalks with flashing beacons, speed tables that prompt vehicles to reduce speed at intersections, and many others. The city of Los Angeles Department of Racket and Parks, along with Councilmember David Rue and the Travel Town Museum Foundation, celebrated Travel Town Museum's 65th birthday with a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new gift shop. The new larger gift shop will feature railroad-related books, toys, clothes, and collectibles. All sales from the store support the Travel Town Museum Foundation, which runs the museum's volunteer programs, restoration projects, and educational outreach efforts.
Travel Town is a very truly unique experience. It's free, and it's open to the public, and each year it hosts thousands of visitors, children and adults alike.
On the other side of town, the Department of Racket and Parks also celebrated another city milestone, the 90th anniversary of the Holby Park Lawn Bowling Club. Holby Park, located in Holby Hills, was originally part of a Spanish land grant and was deeded to the city of Los Angeles in 1926. One year later, the Holby Park Lawn Bowling Club was established and remains the only lawn bowling club operating in the city of LA. The club currently has 2,000 members, with the oldest member more than a century old.
It's a sport where age doesn't matter. The oldest bowlers in the club are 103 and 100. It just matters how skillful you are.
Well, it's another reason to enjoy green spaces in South LA. The annual LA Power Fest brought close to 2,000 visitors to Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and Anna Marcos brings us the highlights.
The LA Power Fest brought out the dancing spirit in lots of folks around here, big and small. The annual party hosted by the Community Coalition is on its sixth year of celebrating a victory. The people in this corner of South LA have taken back their part.
Just over seven years ago, this park had a closed-down rec center, no lighting, no sporting, lots of sex work, lots of drug addiction, and we worked with the community to make this park a place for the community, and now we celebrate it.
The Health and Wellness Tent was pretty popular, providing just another reason for more dancing. But the Kitty Tent was pretty crowded, too, with face painting, finger painting, brush painting, and, well, just all kinds of creative messy stuff.
Communities, come out, enjoy the park, take over the green space, and enjoy some great music.
But it wasn't just fun and games here.
And we have another tent around getting people to take action, specifically to address some of the issues that are impacting our quality of life. Here in South Los Angeles...
I get to learn about the issues that Community Coalition is working on, from criminalization of poverty to policing, to the way that we spend our dollars.
Music, dancing, art, green spaces, and a chance to do good in your community. Not a bad way to spend a sunny Saturday in South LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
The event also helped mark the groundbreaking for a new fitness trail in the park. Well, come out and celebrate Dia de las Muertas festivities at the city's most popular cultural destinations, and take a walk on the Wild Side during a tour of Hollywood Forever Cemetery. All this in this week's Things to Do. For 44 years, Self-Health Graphics and Art has organized one of the most popular Dia de las Muertas events in LA, and perhaps the oldest Day of the Dead commemoration in the country. This program is unique in that it provides the community with a season of activities from August to November to celebrate and prepare for Dia de las Muertas. The activities include the participation of over 50 community organizations, 150-plus volunteers, and thousands of attendees. The 44th Annual Dia de las Muertas Celebration takes place on Saturday, November 4 at 4:00 p.m. at the Mariachi Plaza. And the celebrations continue throughout the weekend over at Plaza de la Raza, as it hosts the 8th Annual El Villario Dia de las Muertas Cultural Celebration. This memorable event celebrates the cultural spirit and heritage of Dia de las Muertas. The celebration will feature activities, including an art exhibit showcasing the talents of over 100 various artists, showcasing original, one-of-a-kind Dia de las Muertas pieces. It all takes place Saturday, November 4 and November 5 at Plaza de la Raza. This November, commune with the spirits of Rudolph Valentino, Judy Garland, Cecil B. DeMille, John Huston, and others in Hollywood's most exclusive club, Hollywood Forever Cemetery. Join the official walking tour of the Cemetery of the Stars, revealing forgotten scandals from the early days of Hollywood, eulogizing beloved and little-known stars alike, and navigating the mysteries of Hollywood lore. Upcoming tours are November 4 and November 11 from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from All of Us here at LA this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacitybeat.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Good morning. Good morning, if everyone would please take their seats. It is Tuesday, October 31st. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorin, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves. O'Farrell seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Harris Dawson moves and Mr. Rue moves. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we rise? We'll be led today in our flag salute by Mr. Mike Bonin.
Please place their hand over their hearts. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let's run through the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, items one through seventeen are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests to hold items six, seven, eight, and nine on the desk for amending motions and substitute motions.
Okay, well, let's do that. Any other specials? Mr. Bonin? Item three? Let's hold that. And prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Continue, please.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Mr. Harris Dawson, did you?
Ask the number twelve be forthwith?
Mr. Rue?
Number two, forthwith, please.
Number two, forthwith. Mr. Corretts, would you like to begin today with the presentation?
Look at these gorgeous little faces. They're orange and black for Halloween. Thank you to Animal Services and ACT Adan Prieto for bringing these kittens to City Council. We're going to start having feline Fridays again once a month, but my apologies for the fact that this isn't a Friday. We've drastically reduced our euthanasia numbers, but we still occasionally have to euthanize cats for space. And we've come out of breeding season, so we have too many kittens, and we have a number of beautiful cats that are looking for their forever homes. So if you want to get your paws on one of these, we want to see every one of these adopted so we don't have to send them back to the shelter. I hope someone here is going to step up and adopt a lifetime of love and companionship and save these cats' lives. If you want more information about them, they'll be in the back with Adan, or you can call my office to find out how you can adopt these wonderful animals. So someone on my staff will be perfectly happy to help you. And this is Holly, who is eight months old, and is very sweet. This one is a one-year-old male named Barack. Did I get that wrong? Oh, I'm sorry. Got the names wrong. Just call up for the right cats. This one's a sweetheart, too. What, you have something to say? Speaking to the microphone. This one has no name, doesn't have a name, and you can hold it upside down, scratch its belly. Most cats will claw you. This one just purrs. So this one's a great one. So come on down, check it out if you're looking to adopt a cat or kitten, and we have some great ones here for you. And thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. And if you... Please, let's give our cats a home. So if you're watching this on television or you're in the building, please call and we'll make those pets available. Mr. Rue, are you ready?
Good morning, colleagues, and happy Halloween. Now, of course, it wouldn't be Halloween if we didn't have some creepy crawler creatures. And to help me do that, I have the L.A. Zoo here, as well as Marsha Maeda and her staff from the L.A. County Animal Care Control, to honor their work, and in particular, Senior Zookeeper Chris Rodriguez and Ian Recio, curator of reptiles and amphibians. This past summer, a resident of Ventura County noticed something very odd wiggling down the street. It was a highly venomous Cape Cobra. Now, here in Southern California, we're used to a lot of different animals, but it's pretty strange to see a cobra that's native to Africa near Thousand Oaks. As it turns out, this same neighbor was housing six alligators in his swimming pool, dozens of cobras, rattlesnakes, vipers, and 24 gila monsters. Obviously, this went way beyond what you would call a house pet, and it was threatening the safety of the community as well as the health of these exotic creatures. But Ian and Chris of the Los Angeles Zoo, as well as Marsha Maeda and her crew from L.A. County Animal Services stepped up. They were on the scene, and a warrant was issued and cleared the house, handling every animal with care, making sure that not only the community was safe, but every animal got the care that it needed. Now, the original intent of today was to have some of these animals here, an alligator or possibly a cobra or a gila monster, but I didn't want to upstage Councilmember Corretts and his cats. And also, I remembered I have the exotic animals ordinance banned that I introduced. So instead, today, these animals are all safe at the L.A. Zoo, the San Diego Zoo, and the reptile sanctuaries in Arizona and Colorado. This was above and beyond what the zoo staff are asked to do, but Ian and Chris, as well as many in the L.A. Zoo, do what they do, not just because it's their job, but because they are passionate about proper animal care, well-being, and research. And I know we have lots of pictures for those who are interested in seeing the gila monster or the alligator in a pool, but now I'd like to invite John Lewis, the director of the L.A. Zoo, to say a few words. John?
Thank you, councilmember. And yes, I think we do have a few slides just to show you some of the species that the staff helped to collect. The alligator, I think there was as many as eight in the pool. Yeah, eight different ones that they had to collect and find homes for. This is something you may not normally think of with the zoo staff. We help the county, we've helped federal agencies when they confiscate animals that shouldn't be coming into the country, but more importantly, we help to find homes for them. So the alligator, obviously, is native to our country. Here's a Gaboon viper, which is a venomous snake from Africa. It's a pretty, from a reptile standpoint, cool snake in the sense that it's got the longest fangs of any snake of its size, and they're very flexible, so they can be really tough to handle and do it safely. So that really attests to all the staff that had to collect these animals. The gila monsters from southwest United States and northwest Mexico, one of the two venomous species that can be found in North America. The beaded lizard is the other one, and this is a black-headed python. This is from northern Australia. So, I mean, the snakes ran the gamut from the cobras to pythons to lizards to alligators, and there were hundreds of animals in this home, which they just shouldn't have been there for the public safety, but just as importantly, for the animal welfare and safety. So I really appreciate the councilmen recognizing the staff here today. They do these things. They take their experience and techniques into the community for public safety, help other agencies, and also for the welfare of the animals. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And now I'd like to invite Marsha Maeda, Director of the Los Angeles County Animal Care, to the podium.
I'd like to thank the councilmember and the city council for giving us this opportunity to thank Ian and Chris for the work that they did and their assistance with us. I can't tell you what a scary situation this was for us. These animals, the snakes, are so venomous. We had to have a helicopter and paramedics standing by in case there was a bite. There was a full-blown public safety crisis for Thousand Oaks, which we serve under contract through our animal control services. We had to actually serve warrants on two properties, and we went in believing there were about 25 venomous snakes in regular housing conditions, and it was a simple licensing violation. But when we arrived there, it was very, very different. There were almost 80 venomous snakes, plus the alligators, the gila monsters, the Mexican beaded lizards, and all are venomous, as well as the large cobras, I mean, pythons, more than 100. And they were in extremely poor, hoarding, insufficient, inhumane conditions. So we knew we had to remove all those animals immediately for their own safety and well-being as well as public safety, because a couple had escaped. When our officers were there, they saw snake skins on the ground, which they knew there had been loose snakes shedding their skins there. So it was a dangerous and scary situation. It was also incredibly hot. It was over 100 degrees. Ian and Chris worked in just horrible conditions. The breathing conditions were terrible. They had to wear masks. They had to have their eyes flushed because of the ammonia, and they did it all without any complaint. They were so concerned for our safety, and they just assumed control. And I can't tell you how wonderful it was to have their confidence and skill and knowledge there, because they had to go into cages. They had no labeling on them. They didn't know what they were pulling out, what kind of snake it was. Was it a spitting cobra? Was it a biting cobra? Was it a rattlesnake? They just didn't know, and they just handled it remarkably. They were just... Their confidence was just so overwhelming and assuring to us, and throughout the day, they showed great compassion for all the animals. They treated them very gently. They even bathed the gila monsters and cleaned their cages before transport because they were concerned about the welfare of the animals. And they also provided follow-up advice for us on their rehoming and follow-up care. So the animals continued to get the proper care that they needed, the treatment, and then ultimate placement in sanctuaries or zoos. Although these are dangerous animals that should not be in a home, you know, we love all animals, and we want to see all animals in a proper place, and that's where they are now, and the community is much safer. They were just really invaluable, and we're so grateful for their help and going above and beyond the call of duty and being such terrific partners. And it's an excellent example of partnership between city and county and working together to protect the community and to help animals. So what I'd like to do is present two plaques each to Chris and Ian, which say is a symbol of our grateful recognition for your outstanding and dedicated service in capturing dozens of venomous reptiles as part of a department search warrant service. You exhibit the highest knowledge, skills, abilities, and professionalism, and your service ensured the safety of all responders and the community at large. We are forever grateful for your partnership and support.
Thank you, Marsha. Don't go anywhere, Ian and Chris. You know, this is where we call county-city collaboration. And on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we'd like to also present certificates to Ian and Chris for their work, which went above and beyond for both the safety of the residents and the reptiles. So without further ado, from the City of Los Angeles and the entire City Council... And also, I'd like to present to the Los Angeles Zoo staff, who has the best staff and for... In the city of, not just the city of Los Angeles, but in the nation, and also working so collaboratively with the county, a resolution from the city commending for your outstanding work on behalf of the people and creatures of Los Angeles.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you for the work that you do. Mr. Walsh, are you here? You want to come forward on general public comment, Mr. John Walsh? Yes, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDempse. Now, if you don't think people are listening... Now, if you don't think people are listening to me, I said that the second that the mayor declared for governor, everybody will go around his, his lover, male lover, Glenn Dake, and start asking him questions. And I named the reporters that would do it. And as a result, he's not running. Now, he believes in gay pride, but he also believes in gay cover-up. So he doesn't want people to know that he has a husband and a wife. He has Glenn Dake, D-A-K-E, go look at him. He has a paid job at MWD from the mayor, and so does his sister-in-law. HollywoodHighlands.org. And I'm telling you that the mayor is in love twice. He's bisexual.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you. Let's go to item eight. So I move that we adopt the Budget and Finance Report. And I need a second. I'll get that from Mr. Krikorian. So on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Ms. Martinez, if I can get you to spell me for a minute?
Mr. Wesson, on item nine.
Thank you, Madam President and members. When the, with the passage of Prop 64 and Measure M, the voters of this state and the voters of this city instructed, in fact, let me put it another way, our employers, our bosses, the people we work for, instructed us to come up with a framework that would create a legal mechanism for cannabis in the state of California. In the City of Los Angeles, I want to say 64 passed with 64%. That's not a 51 to 49, 64%. Measure M passed by 80%. Our bosses told us that they wanted us to tax, regulate, and police the legal use of cannabis in the City of Los Angeles. I have often stood and indicated to you that it's not about doing what we want to do. Sometimes it's about doing what we have to do to the best of our ability. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Harris-Dawson, and myself began having hearings on this subject in May of 2016. Members, we had hearings in the valley, hearings in the south side of the city, hearings at City Hall. We had over 14 hearings. Most of those hearings were in the evening so that we could ensure that all people were afforded an opportunity to come before this body and give their recommendations, suggestions, talk to us about if they supported or if they did not support. We took Mr. Krikorian hours of public comment. There was not one person that came to one of our hearings wanting to speak that was not afforded the opportunity to speak. In fact, Mr. Buscagino, we had a workshop in your district in Watts where we had seats for over 600 people, and it was standing room only. In these council chambers, on the norm, we had 200 people. And on many occasions, it was standing room only in this great hall as well. We've heard from Lori Ajax, who is designated by the state to oversee cannabis regulations. We heard from high-ranking officials from the states of Colorado, Washington, Oregon. We heard from the cities of Seattle. We heard from the city of Denver. We heard from our county's Health Department. We heard from law enforcement officials. We had panels that had testing labs. We heard from our neighborhood councils. We heard from the industries. And before I go on, I just want to give a big thank you to all of the city staff who worked on this. And they worked after hours without any additional pay. To the city staffs that helped us on this, I want to say that you guys are the glue that keeps this city together. What I present to you today, members, is a piece of work that we're very proud of. I would say we have, because of all of those hearings, because of all of those hours, we have consensus on about 80 to 85% of this package of regulations that today I ask you to send to the city attorney's office so they can officially begin drafting this document. And eventually, the document will come back to us. We have tried to incorporate in this document just about everything that we can to get this started. Today, you'll see there are some amendments that are being circulated. These amendments come primarily from recommendations from you and your staff and recommendations from the public. Now, let me be fair in saying that this document is not totally complete yet because we still have to figure out a way to provide legal opportunity, opportunities for people to consume this product. So that's something that I hope to bring to you in the next few weeks. One of the things that we discovered in our meetings with the state representatives from throughout this country, not one of them put in place a program that is called a social equity program. Now, we don't have that in our package today, but by the time we vote on the final version, it will be there. We began serious conversations on that yesterday. And it is important for us as Los Angeles to lead the way. There is no way that I would recommend, or the committee would recommend to this body, that we move forward with these regulations without a social equity program. We are Los Angeles. We are used to being at the front of the line. It's not hard for us to accept the fact, the hard truths, that in this city, that sometime the color of your skin determines the relationship that you have with law enforcement. That's just a fact. So we will address this. When you look across all ethnic groups, you find out that the consumption of this product is equal. In fact, if there's one group that consumes this more than another, it would be young, white males. So it is wrong for us to look at consumption, but then when you look at arrests, you find out that men that look like me, men that look like Marquise Harris-Dawson, and men that look like Mr. Curran Price arrested almost four times as much. So there's no way that this city can move forward on this without a social equity program and a program that reinvests in the community. This war on drugs, members, was a war on black people and a war on poor people. And we, on the Los Angeles City Council, need to take the steps to make that right. And today is our first, today is our first step in that direction. So what I am requesting is that, this is a complicated document. We need to move it on to the city attorney's office so that they can begin the drafting of this document. The 15 or 20% of the things that we don't have a consensus on as of yet, we will add them later. But Madam, Madam President, I want to just take a moment to commend Mr. Weezer, commend Mr. Harris-Dawson for all of the hard work that they put in on their staff. I also want to commend my staff for all of the, the hard work that they've done. It's been a long time coming, but it's time for Los Angeles to not just regulate this industry. I think where it relates to this country, it's time for us to revolutionize the way that people view this industry. So with that said, members, I request, and I vote on this document, join us in sending this to the city attorney's office. Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We have two members on the queue, but there's also a number of public speakers. Members, would you like to go first?
No, I can go.
Okay, let's go ahead and take cards. I'm going to call three names. If you can please form a line right behind the podium. First speaker, speaker is Gallagher, followed by Amy F. and Donnie Anderson. Are you here? Can you please form a line behind Mr. Gallagher, please? Followed by Manny Ohana. Is Manny Ohana here? Please stand in line. And then the last speaker on, on this first group is Doug Haynes. Doug Haynes, are you here? Go ahead, sir. Good morning.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to the committee for all their hard work. But I would like to emphasize a couple of points that are really important. Limited immunity, limited immunity during the application process is really important. Provisional permits to operate after the application has been accepted and granted so that legitimate LA operators won't be disadvantaged versus other cities that are going quickly and black marketeers who don't care what you do. That means fewer taxes for LA, more public health risks, and policing issues if we do not get limited immunity during the application process and provisional permits to operate after the application has been accepted and granted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Amy F.?
Yes, is this eight or nine? Because I signed up for both.
This is, this is nine.
Okay.
Hold on for just a second. Before, let me just explain. You have one minute to speak on this item, so go ahead.
All right. So as far as, we're talking about social equity. I am, first off, want to talk about, we need to have the zoning stuff talked about, and you guys haven't done that. And if you look at these maps that you cannot read still from the state, from the attorneys, whatever they are, zoning people, you can't read where these are at. So we need to have maps that we can read. And second of all, who's doing these maps? Because there's all kinds of areas where you can still have stuff, but there's groups of pink where you can only have one shop with only 800 feet distance. We need that to be 600 feet, and there needs to be more pink in these. All right? Second of all, fees. Why, if we're talking about social equity, are we charging at the moment $20,000 for the city only? Not even the state, $20,000 to be able to have something? If you want social equity, how about giving the people that you give shops to six months to pay? Because anyone who opens a shop will be able to pay you your $20,000 in six months. But to ask for that upfront is giving only the rich and the people who have money the ability to have a shop.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Donnie Anderson, followed by Manny Ohana and Doug Haynes. Good morning.
Good morning. I just want to thank the council and council president for the hard work that we've been doing for this issue. But Los Angeles has been doing this for 21 years, and we finally getting it right. Our thing is, we want to help make sure that we get it all the way right. Let's prosecute those who are, are continuing to do wrong in this industry. Send a strong message that LA will not be led by those who are doing wrong in our community. Next, we need to make sure that the council is in control with the Office of Finance because a lot of this that happened, happened with the Office of Finance. A lot of people was getting their heads chopped off for one infraction instead of being able to still get their stuff taken care of. So I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Manny Ohana, followed by Doug Haynes. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. I'd like to also thank the council for all the work you guys have been doing. And just touch on what the first speaker said. I didn't see in item nine or the pamphlet anything about a task force being assigned to handle black market operators. And I think that to help new operators opening up under the new legislation, that it's really important that these black market operators who are not paying taxes be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. My name's Doug Haynes. I'm here representing two neighborhood councils, the East Hollywood Neighborhood Council and the Hollywood Studio of Sick Neighborhood Council. And we ask that you consider the following changes. First, to increase the distancing requirement for cannabis sales from 800 feet to up to 2,500 feet. To include daycare centers, youth centers, colleges, vocational schools, and churches that have youth services as sensitive uses requiring a minimum distance. Remove any grandfather status for existing marijuana operations. Prohibit retail store sales in mixed-use buildings with residential units. And any building adjacent to a residential building within 100 feet of a residential zone by airline. Allow anyone to appeal a cannabis license approval, and allow 75 days for the city council to consider that. Restrict retail store hours to 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Require that all applicant's personal information and an operation security plan be made public. Require an MND mitigated declaration as a minimum review necessary under CQ.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Okay, members, thank you. Before I go to the members that are on the queue, if I can get Ms. Packard. are on the queue, if I can get Ms. Packard, our executive director, to come forward, I'm going to have her talk about the amendments and walk us through the program. If we could get the other appropriate staff to come to the center table as well, maybe the city attorney's office, representatives from the CLA. So Ms. Packard, if you could walk through the today's amendments and then walk through the package where we are today.
Thank you, Honorable Council President. Hello, council members. It's interesting. I tried to put together a quick PowerPoint slide to describe the policy developments related to cannabis here in the city of Los Angeles. And I ended up putting together a 44-slide deck PowerPoint presentation because it is not at all easy or simple to have this conversation. It's a very complex conversation. I'll first focus on what the council president has asked me to focus on, and those are the amendments that are before us.[686.12][686.12](SHH) After going into the specific amendments, I probably will back up and try and frame this conversation because this is the first time that I'm having the opportunity to be in front of the city council since my appointment. And so if there are any questions that I can answer for folks, then I'd like to be able to do so as well. The first amendment relates to particular license categories in areas of potential undue concentration. Essentially, this first amendment would add language that would restrict the number of licenses that would be issued once a particular threshold was met. That threshold, as currently articulated, would be based on public convenience or necessity, similar to the current public convenience or necessity procedure for alcohol establishments. As currently listed, the ratio would be one license per 10,000 residents for retailer, a ratio of one license per 7,500 residents for microbusiness, and the same for cultivation. This amendment states that Prop D compliant dispensaries that are deemed eligible for Prop M priority processing would be exempt from this process. The second amendment, that is particularly important in terms of how these applications and licenses and businesses get processed, relates to non-retail businesses in the city of Los Angeles that are currently operating without the authorization of the city. This would allow these businesses to be provided limited immunity while their application is pending final approval. There are a list of 13 different requirements that these businesses would have to meet in order to qualify for the ability to continue their operations in return for limited immunity. These requirements are as follows. Businesses would be required to submit their application within 15 days. They'd have to be seeking to continue operations for the same type of activity that they're already currently engaged in. They would have to attest to and provide proof of being a supplier of a Prop D compliant dispensary prior to January 1, 2017. They'd have to attest and provide proof of being in operation prior to January 1, 2016. The premises for which this business is intended to be licensed must meet all of the land use and sensitive use requirements. The applicant must submit to a pre-inspection, a pre-licensing inspection, and any fire life safety violations must be corrected prior to their ability to continue to operate. Applicants must submit to a financial audit, provide an identification agreement to the city, provide evidence of an agreement with a testing laboratory. They'd also have to guarantee that only non-retail operations would continue. They'd have to sign an affidavit saying that they would cease operations if they were denied a city license or a state license. They'd also have to sign an affidavit saying that they were going to operate in compliance with all criteria set forth by the city. And these individuals would have to be and qualify under the social equity program, the proposed social equity program. The third amendment that I'd like to detail relates to who can appeal. There would be language that would be added in listing who can appeal. There are a number of other amendments, but I'm going to focus on the big-ticket items, the last of which is that this amendment would require the Department of Water and Power, LAPD, and the Department of Cannabis Regulation with the assistance of the city attorney to implement changes relative to the Department of Water and Power being authorized to disconnect utilities at establishments that were unauthorized and unlicensed here in the city of Los Angeles. And again, this had already been mentioned, but working with the city attorney, LA Fire Department, Police Department, Department of Cannabis Regulation, Department of City Planning to provide rules and regulations for social consumption based on a CLA analysis. Now, those are the larger and more deviating amendments that are taking place. But again, if, it might make sense for me to provide a little bit more context.
Go right ahead.
All right. And I'm not going to go through my entire 44-slide PowerPoint presentation. If you all are interested, I'll come by your office and I'll give you the 44-slide PowerPoint I'm going to skip over the history of medical cannabis here in the state of California because Council President Weston has walked us through what has got us to this point here in the city of Los Angeles. But essentially, Prop 215 passed in 1996. We have, for the first time in 2015, the Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which provides first-in-time statewide regulatory framework up until this point. Local jurisdictions, some local jurisdictions have taken it upon themselves to regulate commercial cannabis In November of last year, Californians voted for Proposition 64. That licensing is scheduled to begin January 2, 2018. After Proposition 64 passed, we ended up in the state of California in a situation where we had two completely separate frameworks for cannabis regulation, one for medical, one for adult use. And those have since been merged into one regulatory framework under SB 94. This process has meant that although the state has released draft medical regulations earlier this year, we are still waiting for statewide adult use regulations. And those are expected to come out sometime late next month, which means that we will be starting this conversation at a statewide level just a few weeks before statewide licensing begins. The city of Los Angeles has gone through a series of policy developments that has allowed us to arrive at this point today where we are beginning to have conversations about how to responsibly regulate cannabis. This first started, serious conversations first started back in 2007 when there was a Medical Marijuana Interim Control Ordinance placing a moratorium on new medical marijuana dispensaries. There have been a number of other policy developments that have happened here in the city of Los Angeles, including a temporary urgency ordinance intended originally to set up a framework to control this industry. That has culminated into Proposition D in 2013 through an interim control ordinance that essentially was an ordinance of prohibition telling folks what they could not do unless they had limited immunity. Which brings us to current day, under the guise of Measure M, where we have set up a number of different things, which the next slide will detail. Measure M becomes effective January 1, 2018. It has given council authority to regulate this commercial cannabis activity. We'll talk about what is happening next with that authority. It will effectively repeal Prop D. It gives priority in the processing of applications to Prop D compliant dispensaries, those who have been in operation since 2007. It sets up a new tax structure. And it also gives the city new tools for enforcement, namely, the city will now be able to levy $20,000 a day fines, not only against cannabis businesses themselves, but also against property owners who allow unlicensed commercial cannabis activity to take place on their properties. And again, it mentions the ability for the city to work with the Department of Water and Power to disconnect utilities for unauthorized businesses. So since the passage of Measure M, what has happened? There have been draft commercial cannabis activity regulations, which are being considered today. There has also been a draft commercial cannabis activity location restriction language that has been developed. There has been a motion on social equity that has been put forth. A new department, a Department of Cannabis Regulation, and a Cannabis Regulation Commission has been established by ordinance. Myself as executive director and five commissioners have been appointed and confirmed. And on September 22, the Rules Committee released a revised draft of those commercial cannabis activity regulations. Right now, we're in the process of implementing our cannabis regulatory policy, which includes the building of infrastructure for the Department of Cannabis Regulation, setting up various procedures for and related to interdepartmental coordination, the development of the social equity program, as well as policy developments related to education, regulation, which includes licensing and compliance, and also enforcement. I did want to take a moment to describe what took place yesterday in the development of the proposed social equity program here in the city of Los Angeles. Back in May, the Rules Committee directed the CLA to produce a social equity analysis that was intended to promote equitable ownership and employment opportunities in the cannabis industry in order to decrease disparities in life outcomes for marginalized communities and to address disproportionate impacts of the war on drugs. They were directed to create policy options that would allow for things like ownership training programs, employee training programs, technical assistance, capital, and any other program necessary to make sure that these folks had access to this industry. This analysis was conducted largely through consultants hired by the CLA, Amec, Foster, and Wheeler, who were in front of the Rules Committee yesterday, giving a presentation and update on their final recommendations. There was community outreach and a public workshop that was held. Data analysis took place that focused on poverty and LAPD statistics. Racial and ethnic disparities were absolutely identified, but they're not being used for program criteria or recommendations. Also, as a part of the analysis, the consultants were able to identify barriers to access to the industry. And some of those barriers were past criminal records, the ability to obtain compliant land, the ability to get capital and have affordable licensure and startup costs, and technical skills and knowledge as a barrier as well. What I found most interesting is what's on the screen right now and is really the crux of the program. But it highlights the disparities on the screen right now. You'll notice that although African Americans in the city of Los Angeles are only 9.8% of the population, they were 40% of those individuals who were arrested. As previously mentioned, the analysis itself focused on arrest data and information related to where individuals who were low-income lived. And if you look up on the screen right now, you'll see an overlay of where high arrests took place in the city of Los Angeles. This is important because the tiers that are set up for the equity program, Tier 3 specifically, focuses on where these individuals lived and where these high arrests communities are located. Council President Weston mentioned the fact that we held a workshop in Watts, at the Watts Labor Community Action Center. It was a wonderful day. We had over 500 people show up. Very quickly, these are the tiers of the social equity program as it's currently described. Prioritizing individuals who had been impacted by the war on drugs. Recommendations would prioritize processing, recommendations for fee waivers, zero-interest loans, technical business assistance, real estate, job training, expungement clinics, and community reinvestment. And just to frame the issue, I will quickly show... I'm a visual learner, so I will... The application processing windows. The first, the second amendment that I mentioned is articulated here. Essentially, there would be three application processing windows. There would be window one, which would be for Prop D/M compliant businesses. The second amendment would insert window two, which would allow for continuous operations with limited immunity. And then window three would be open for general and social equity applicants on a one-for-one basis. This is the slide that I will end with because it really touches on the complexity of commercial cannabis activity regulations within the city. But essentially, these are, this is the process that cannabis businesses would have to undergo in order to get licensed in the city. Depending on their processing order or window, those first two windows would be able to get a temporary license or limited immunity, followed by a state temporary license, and then follow the arrow to the right, going through their application review, pre-licensing inspection, and department review.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to go to some of the members that are on the queue. We'll start off with Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague, Mr. Weezer, and everybody that participated in all of the hearings that we had all around the city to bring us to the point that we are today. And also applaud the leadership of Kat Packard, our general manager and the person who's helped actualize many of the ideas that residents and members put forward. I just wanted to rise today to ask for strong support and recognition of what we are on the cusp of doing with regard to our social equity program. When you see the number of arrests for cannabis-related activities in the city of Los Angeles, and this really applies to the whole nation, but just for us to be accountable for what happens here in Los Angeles. When you consider, as has been stated twice this morning, that cannabis use is even across demographics, certainly a little bit more male than female, a little bit more white than... than other groups, but when you look at the arrests, the citations, the sort of stop and frisks for cannabis-related activities, there is not one category, not one category, where African Americans and Latinos don't represent at least 75% of the people confronted by us on that issue. And African Americans are less than 10% of the population, Latinos are around half the population. So the disproportionate targeting of African Americans and Latinos is well documented almost any way you slice it. And so here, we have an opportunity to deal with that. And we have a few choices. We can take it head-on and try to do something bold, try to lead the nation, or we can try to act like it didn't happen and say, "Oh, well, we're all even now. It's all been decriminalized. We're going to move on," as if everybody's starting from zero. And what we have before us and what we're in the process of crafting is a policy that acknowledges what has been done, seeks to correct it, and lays out a way for us to be accountable for correcting it. And so I was in church the other day, Mr. President, and a rabbi was speaking. And the rabbi told a story about a house that was built, and the house became a great center of town. And at some point, they found out that the main beam of the house was stolen from another person that didn't own the house. And what the parable said was, in that situation, you have two choices. You either give the person the beam was stolen from a share of the house, or you take the beam out and you tear down the house, or three, you try to figure out a way to compensate the person for the beam. What you don't do is let the house sit there and pretend like the beam was never stolen. And so today, I think we have... We in the city of Los Angeles are taking the choice of trying to correct what has been done and what frankly continues in lots of parts of the U.S. So I want to congratulate everybody that's pushed us in that direction, and also acknowledge the leadership of the President of the Council on this very, very important matter, that if we do right here in Los Angeles, we can set the stage for it to be done all over the United States. I was in Atlanta, the birthplace of Martin Luther King, where the Martin Luther King Center is, and as they're decriminalizing, they're looking at Los Angeles to see what we'll do about social equity and justice. And so it's a very big deal. Again, thank everybody and congrats to the city of LA.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Mr. Weesar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everyone who has brought us to this point should be congratulated for bringing us to a point where we will have the largest metropolitan area in the country with regulations, local regulations that allow for the distribution of marijuana and cannabis. And the voters who voted for Prop 64 should be commended as well because after a cost-benefit analysis, the public had seen that it makes more sense to decriminalize and legalize. And I think here, as we've moved forward, we did the right thing. We were proactive in addressing it because we go back to see what happened with medical marijuana. There was a lot of activity with medical marijuana because the state had allowed it, but the city had not come up with regulations on how to regulate it. So the result of that was over-concentration of dispensaries and communities. We didn't know we should enforce state law or not, and there was a lot of confusion at the time. But thanks to the advocates, thanks to our committee chair, Mr. Wesson, our committee member, Harris Dawson, and everyone who stepped forward, we now are on the cusp of creating some regulations that make sense. We will allow for the dispensation of cannabis, but at the same time, have some protections in there for communities so that we do not impact local communities as people have access to cannabis. That is something that was so important and I think was missing when we tried to regulate medical marijuana. So thank you all who has brought us to this point. And I think I also want to underline the message that my colleague Harris Dawson had made, and that is that as we move forward with the social equity program, it is so important that we correct the historical wrongs that have been made in dealing with cannabis and the war on drugs and the terror and unfairness that brought to certain populations in this country. I feel comfortable with what we have here. I think at the end of the day, this is... We should remind ourselves, though, that this is one more step as we move forward. But we are in a very good place. We've built the administrative infrastructure. We have an executive director. We're building the regulations now, and we're doing it in a very methodical, step-by-step process so that we do it right. And I think we're on the right path on this. So thank you to everyone who made this possible.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to commend you for your leadership on this and committee members and the Rules Committee for the work that you have done and that of your staff members and the city family as well, and you, Kat Packard, Executive Director. The framework is being set up. The infrastructure is being put in place. I am with you 1,000% on the misfire, to put it mildly, of the war on drugs. Love the social equity piece. What I want to do is just talk about, this is a very nuanced initiative here, and I know that in my district, like everyone else's, there are varying needs and concerns that need to be addressed. I also know that today, we're simply talking about the rules and regulations and not the land use piece. For myself, and I think my constituents who have contacted my office, the land use regulations are of the utmost importance, and I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on how that piece will also help protect our neighborhoods. In my district, I have residential right across the street from or next to industrial zones. So I know that that's going to have to be looked at very carefully in terms of really what might be fire and safety and building and safety regulations as they relate to exhaust and commercial activity. Very, very important. We need to take a look at the toxicity of the byproduct of commercial medical marijuana production, the way it's grown and harvested, et cetera, and manufactured for public consumption. The voters indeed spoke overwhelmingly with Prop... What was it, Prop 64? But at the same time, the voters overwhelmingly need us to make sure that the regulations in land use piece offers the opportunity for entrepreneurs to prosper in addressing the social equity piece, but also to protect the neighborhoods that are looking to us to make sure that we get this right. I think there's never been an opportunity for us to learn from the missteps of Prop D. That was really quite a catastrophe back in the day for a number of years. So we want to make sure that when we land on the land use and the rules and regulations for cannabis for commercial use, that we do so very carefully and take a look at all the possible unintended consequences at the same time as we get this right. So those are some of the things that I just want to put out there up front, and I think we're on a good path with this. But just let's really, really hone in on the land use piece moving forward as it relates to these communities that are going to be more vulnerable just because of where they're zoned, these residential areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buscagino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise and recognize your leadership, Mr. President, and the members of the Rules Committee for putting together a complicated and comprehensive restricted policy that includes permitting restrictions. And I'm in favor of the DWP shutdown, a motion that I introduced while we... And a tool that we used with those bad actors in my district with the illegal pot shops, and it was a very effective tool. So I'm happy to see that in the policy before us. Also, the advertising restriction on... Working with Mr. Englander on restricting some of the advertising on public property. The issue that I had, and I know, Mr. President, you mentioned that we're not all there yet, but the issue that I had was the industrial uses. And I know I too echo the same concerns that Mr. O'Farrell has with the land uses, and I know we're not... It still has to come to us. But what was indicated in the report, that CD-15 holds the number-one ranking, largest industrial zone available for indoor cultivation. And communities in the Harbor area, time and time again, have shouldered the burden of heavy industrial zones due to its close proximity to the Port of Los Angeles, very similar to Ms. Rodriguez's district and Ms. Martinez's district as well. But based on the item before us, my district will be the indoor cultivation capital of the city of Los Angeles. So we are disproportionately impacted, in fact, a third of the indoor cultivation will be in Council District 15. And as I mentioned before, some of those hotspots or industrial areas also impact Ms. Rodriguez's and Ms. Martinez's district respectively. So we really need to look, give a serious look at the community benefits for these impacted communities. And as we know, the city of Los Angeles will benefit financially from this new source of income, yet we will be bearing the burden of over-concentration in indoor cultivation without any guarantees of a community benefits agreement. And this is why 9B before you, an amending motion, will call for a community benefits agreement looking at financial contributions, city-controlled special funds, nonprofit organizations, graffiti removal, landscaping, litter pickup, pressure washing, tree planting, tree trimming, public infrastructure improvements. I still have neighborhoods in Wilmington adjacent to the Port of Los Angeles that today still don't have a sidewalk and beat-up roads because of industrial trucks coming in and out of these impacted communities. So with that, I'm hoping to continue that conversation, Mr. President. And again, I want to acknowledge you and your staff, and Andrew, who's really taken the lead on this, and a lot of work on all parts, and looking forward to continuing this conversation as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscagino. And again, let me assure you and other members that we're about 80% there. We still... We want to get the city attorney to begin working on that, and then we'll sort all of these other issues out. So I'm very optimistic. Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, both for calling on me, but for the great work that you and the committee have been doing. I'm really pleased with the work that's been happening, and I'm happy to support this as we move forward. I do have a couple of questions, but actually also building on something Mr. Buscagino said, and it kind of builds into what my question is about. I actually look at some of the cultivation and the manufacturing as potential real benefits for our areas, in the sense that we're always calling for jobs and we're calling for folks to come to our area. I have to imagine that if we have a bonanza of indoor grows or, you know, we're going to have all of these benefits. The community impacts come more with the dispensaries and the issues of crime and nuisance issues that have sometimes been associated with that, that we need to worry about and we need to make sure we're mitigating. But my sense about some of the cultivation and manufacturing, it actually is going to be a net benefit for various different communities. Which leads me to my question. One of the things we're doing here, which is good, we're providing this temporary license to get folks out of the shadows who are currently there, to provide for those who meet these basic fire and safety and health standards, which is critically important. We just had a facility in my district catch on fire. There's a lot of danger that's out there. So I want to see as many of these folks come out of the shadows, even in the early months, so we can start seeing who they are, get their information, get them at least checked off for fire and safety. So then that begs the question of why we are... Why, and the one part of the amendments that I didn't quite understand is why is one of the things that they have to do is to attest that they've been in business since January of 2016? Why is that relevant? And Ms. Parker, if I didn't say it before, thank you for all the great work that you've been doing on this.
Thank you for the question. Part of this conversation about how we move illicit operators into a regulatory framework is trying to identify what these folks are currently doing at the moment. There's language in here that would limit and make sure that folks who might just be engaged in cultivation, don't try and say, "Oh, I was doing cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, all of these other things." But I think that the specific language relative to the date of operations is that we don't want to... I think the policy decision would be, do we want to move these operators in and give them priority over folks who might have been waiting on the sideline for an opportunity to do legitimate activity?
Right. So the question is, why not... Why not just have them... Why not just basically at this point, say whoever is applying is applying and grant the temporary license for folks if they meet all of the basic requirements? And it's kind of a distinction without a difference to some extent, so I'm not going to dwell on it because after six months, it all evens out. But in the... At least to me, it just appears that... I don't know why we're preferencing one over the other in the sense that anyone who wants to be in the space now, I'd rather they have their fire safety, health checks done, the minimum stuff, not guaranteeing a full license, but get them out of the shadows. Help me understand the reasoning.
Thank you, and I appreciate that consideration. I think that part of what the policy decision is trying to do is trying to strike a balance between a number of different stakeholders who want to have access to the industry. One, folks being in the social equity program; other folks, Prop D operators who have been authorized; other folks, illicit operators who have been...
And I'm only talking about the non... I get it with the retail, because that's a very limited number, and because of the space issues that are there, when you have one, you can't have another. But in the more open field of manufacturing and cultivation, it's, to me, is like any other manufacturing.
Right. And I agree. I think that if we're separating and parsing out retail specifically, then the only true consideration would be trying to make sure that folks who were waiting for the legitimate opportunity have an equal footing with folks who are participating in illicit opportunity. And I'd love to sit down and have these conversations with you.
Right. Although the way we're doing it now, by the January 16th arbitrary deadline, doesn't do that.
Correct.
So why wouldn't... Would you recommend that we just get rid of that?
I mean, I think that there are lots of policy decisions, and sometimes there's a date that gets chosen to try and restrict the number of folks who can qualify. And I think that part of the language in these policy considerations is to restrict the number of people who would have priority access. Because essentially, in a conversation about first-come, first-served basis, continuous operations is considered first because you would have never had to stop what you were doing in the first place. So I understand that it's a nuanced distinction, and especially when we parse out retail, that consideration might not even exist anymore. So I agree.
You agree that we shouldn't consider the dates?
Mr. Bloomingfield, the amendment that she's talking to is my amendment. Prior to that, there was not even a mechanism for that category of folk to be engaged. So this is our first attempt. When we first came out with the draft regulations, there was not a pathway for them. So this is the first attempt, and I will gladly sit down if you have some other recommendations. But I made a commitment to them that we were going to try to address it. So this is to reinforce to them that we are committed to do that. This is part of the 20% that we have not sorted all the way out yet. But prior to this amendment, there was not a pathway. And so we're trying to figure out the best way to move forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I too want to join my colleagues in thanking you for your tremendous leadership, along with the members of the Rules Committee, on helping to pull together a very comprehensive and thoughtful policy going forward. Ms. Packard, I also want to thank you. I know from the moment you've arrived, you've just been hitting the ground running, and so I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and approach to this conversation. And I know as many... And I share with my colleagues on... Well, I recognize that the land use conversation isn't being adopted at this moment in time. I too share some of the concerns of my colleagues, both as Mr. Buscagino and Mr. O'Farrell have raised, but also beyond the industrial conversation, in my district, we have quite a bit of agricultural zones, A1 and A2 zones, that are interwoven into our neighborhoods. And we must make sure that our neighborhoods come first. In particular, our hillsides in my district are very vulnerable, if not protected. And so I want to be sure that going forward, we worked very thoughtfully and collaboratively to assure that we can protect our hillsides and our communities, because keeping them first in this conversation is paramount to ensuring a... first in this conversation is paramount to ensuring a very thoughtful outcome. And so I thank you for your work and your leadership on this, and look forward to a continued conversation as it relates to our land use policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you. And yeah, I want to thank you as well, Mr. President. You know, Prop D, when it passed here in Los Angeles, was a complete failure. We had more marijuana stores in every single community than we did ice cream parlors and doughnut shops. And maybe it doesn't go hand in hand, but in any event, the fact is, they were incredibly complicated, and still are complicated, to tell who's a good operator and who's not, who's legitimate and who's not, and then trying to shut them down. We had each district, in fact, well over 100 of them. And so hopefully, these rules and regulations address those issues that everybody had already brought up, that we don't see them in every single community. What I'd like to see, and I'm not, offer a, a friendly motion to this as well, I'm looking for a second, is that when this comes back, we can take the language, particularly that in, that it's in 9A under number one, that identifies the populations, the type of zones, and get back from the Planning Department, a table of what that looks like, as well as a map with each zone in each council district. It should be pretty easy to put together. There are overlay zones and overlay maps based on what this language means, so we can actually visually see it.
I'll second that, Mr. Englander.
Thank you very much. And I know Marquise Harris-Dawson was ready to second as well, so I appreciate that. So if we get that back when this comes back, I think it'll be very helpful on what everybody's been talking about, in terms of what we're looking at in this space. And by, and then I would also add that we do that by license type as well. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this motion, and, and hats off to you and leadership on the committee, Councilman Marquise Harris-Dawson, and, and Jose Wezar, and the advocates, those who support this, and those who, who are opposed to it. Appreciate the input, input back and forth. And Cat, I think your leadership has certainly made a difference, and we appreciate that. And I think it's important to, to remember that as we move forward, this is, this is a framework. This is not the final. It's, it's a framework, as the President pointed out. And we still have lots and lots of discussions. Certainly, in my district, for example, in, in CD9, we're overwhelmed with non-compliant dispensaries. You know, some on the same block, matter of fact, one or two down from the district office. So to bring some order to this chaos is going to be welcome, and we all are going to welcome it. I think it's significant that we are looking at the adoption of a significant social equity policy, one that makes sense, not just for the individuals impacted, but for the city at large. And I think, again, it sets us on a path of really providing some leadership in this area. We certainly want to take a closer look at providing some financial assistance to, to, to those communities, because it doesn't mean, if you can't, if you don't have the money to implement the license, really getting one doesn't really mean very much. And so we want to make sure, again, that those things are, are being attended to, and especially, you know, with the short window that we were talking about opening up. But I've got a question on another related topic, and that is staffing. You know, unless we, unless you've got the personnel to implement, to, to police, to monitor these programs, you know, we, we're still going to be left with a lot of chaos. Give us an update on, on staffing, on, on challenges you have, on where we are with that, and what you need in order to move the department forward.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate the, the question, because you're absolutely right. There are a number of resources that the city is going to need in order to move this conversation forward. There have been a number of reports that have come out from the CAO relative to various city departments and, and what their needs are. Those departments thus far have included LAPD, the Fire Department, City Attorney, Office of Finance, and, and I will defer to those agencies and, and what their various personnel needs are. But part of what has been interesting about the two months that I've been here with the city, in kind of this very quick orientation process, is that my department's budget and personnel were created prior to the policy being developed. And so when the department was originally created with five staff members, I, I don't think that it was contemplated that the department would hold all of the responsibilities that are within the regulations, the draft regulations that we see right now. The five staff members that I have been allocated to the department has been allocated immediately. I really see that as an administrative team, a management team. But this department will still need extensive personnel resources related to policy and in education and community outreach, but more focused on licensing, inspections, and enforcement. Rough estimates say that the city of Los Angeles will receive over 10,000 applications for commercial cannabis activity. Just two weeks ago, I was in Denver. Denver, for the last three years, has held a marijuana management symposium, where they invite various regulators from different cities, states, and countries at this point to share best practices and strategies. And one of the things that I was most interested in, as I went to this management symposium, I wanted to see everyone's budget, and I wanted to see everyone's organizational chart, because the city of Los Angeles can't look to Denver to figure out what it's going to do. It can't look to Portland to, to figure out what it's going to do. Los Angeles has over 4 million people. So when we're looking at how we need to set up our regulatory frameworks, we have to look at entire states. So as I began to look at the staffing resources that were dedicated to the states of Colorado, the states of Washington, there are extensive responsibilities just related to application review and investigative backgrounds on potential cannabis businesses, the ability for this department to go out and do inspections, to make sure that cannabis businesses are compliant with what are, with what is in our regulations, because it's great to have the regulations on the books, but if I don't have inspectors who can go and make sure that folks aren't selling to minors, that they're not putting products in places that they shouldn't be putting products, that products aren't being stored correctly, then, then we are setting ourselves up for failure. So I would love to continue further conversations as to the specific needs, and I, I think that this is a very timely moment to have this conversation, as we are 80% the, the way there. I have a, a much clearer understanding of what my personnel needs are at this point. So thank you. I appreciate the question.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Let me say, first of all, you started off your comments today, Mr. President, by saying sometimes we do what we have to do and not what we want to do, and this is certainly one of those cases. And I also want to applaud you for taking the bull by the horns on, as we've had from the discussion, and as Ms. Packer just described by the width of her PowerPoint presentation that she was prepared to give, this is a massively complicated challenge that we have. And since the day I walked into this council, almost eight years ago now, we've been wrestling with this issue, and frankly, not very well. We have developed policy over the course of almost a decade that has largely failed. It's largely failed to provide fairness within this industry. It's largely failed to provide adequate protections for our communities. We keep flailing around trying to come up with policy, and we haven't done a very effective job of it. The one good thing is that we continue to move in the direction of, of fighting against the misguided war on drugs. And I think that has been a very positive thing. But in terms of the regulatory environment, to this date, we haven't done a very effective job. And Ms. Packer, I am very pleased that you now are on board with the breadth of experience that you have, with the national perspective that you have, to be able to, to continue to move us in the direction of a reasonable regulatory framework. But as it stands now, what's before us today, I think still has a lot of areas that I have significant questions about. And I've introduced, you'll have a stack of motions on your desks shortly, if you don't already. But some of those areas include, how do we regulate the distribution of edible cannabis products in a way that protects people in a recreational environment, as opposed to a medical environment? And the, the risks to children and others that we have without adequate regulation there are significant. What should be our sensitive uses? We've taken a, a pretty good crack at that, but for example, the list of sensitive uses, and I know this may be, come back for further discussion with regard to land use, but it doesn't include permanent supportive housing, for example, in which our homeless populations, some of which are struggling with substance abuse, may not, may be, you know, right next door to, to a dispensary or, or a, a retail outlet. Ms. Rodriguez already mentioned the concerns about agricultural zones, and I share them. And I know others of us who have significant agricultural zones in our district share those concerns for cultivation as well. With regard to testing, testing as in the framework that's before us, the testing licenses are pushed off. I think they should be moved up. I actually think testing should be done right now, because consumers who are using these products should know what they're getting. And so we should have testing licenses today, not on January 1st. I have concerns about what we've done with regard to labor protections and local hiring, and the opportunity that there is for people to abuse independent contractors in order to get around our local hiring requirements that we'd like to have in here. I, I'm concerned about deliveries and the Uberization of marijuana deliveries. I, I think we should have, if we're going to have deliveries, it should be from fixed locations, so that we have an ability to enforce, rather than somebody in a car with a, with a smartphone. I have concerns that the list of applicants who are automatically rejected is not broad enough, and it doesn't encompass people who are convicted for violent crimes and organized crime, and other, you know, things that should be obvious factors to reject people. So these are just some of the areas that I think we still have more work to do. And the concern I have, Mr. President, is that whenever we advance a policy forward where this council has not finished its work, and we ask for an ordinance, we do one of two things. Either we put in stone what we end up voting for, and/or we give too much policymaking authority to the city attorney's office. This is our decision to make, not the city attorney. And in, in my view, this is, although I respect the fact that there have been so many public hearings, many of these folks who are here have been to every single one of them, and have given their comments, many of our neighborhood councils have weighed in, there's been a lot of public input. But this is the very first time 15 members of the city council have had an opportunity to debate even what our priorities are with this policy. So, and now, this morning, we're given even more amendments that we have to consider this morning, and I'm not prepared to do that. I, I think that this is something that we should keep here, that we should continue to discuss here among us before we ship this off to the city attorney to begin drafting anything. And another example, because it's come up in a number of discussions, is the social equity component. Of course, we should have some kind of social equity component as part of this policy. Of course, we should. But we don't know yet what that's going to look like. We don't know who should be prioritized. We could do it in many different ways. We could have it with a DBE, MBE kind of model, where we give businesses an advantage if they come from a disadvantaged community, or if they're owned by women or minorities or others. That's one way to do it. We could do it based on the, the community benefits kind of model that Mr. Buscagino talked about, so that the money that comes in actually gets spent for the benefit of communities that have been impacted by the war on drugs, and that have been impacted also by drug addiction and other kinds of substance abuse. So, you know, there's many ways that we can craft this, so that the term "social equity" without more does not give me guidance in what it is that we're going to do. And in my view, I, you know, I think that there's, there's many ways that we can provide social equity that don't involve people who've been convicted of felonies jumping the line over people who've worked hard in that very same neighborhood to raise their children in an environment that they try to keep them away from drug dealers and away from gangs. And they've worked hard all their life, and now they're going to be told that they are put at the back of the line, so that the very convicted drug dealer in that neighborhood that they've tried to keep their kids away from gets to jump them in the line. So that's the sort of thing that I think we have to have a lot better definition on before I'm prepared to move forward in voting for a policy. So, Mr. President, I think at this point, I would ask that we keep this matter here in council and not advance it to, to the city attorney until we've had an opportunity to further define some of these, these areas that, in my view, still need further definition.
Okay. Mr. Krikorian, I respect your opinion, but I will still request that we move this forward. The social equity piece is not part of today's vote. It is a very complex document, and the reason why I want to move it to the city attorney's office is so that they can begin the drafting of it. We still have more than enough time to make adjustments. I intend on bringing this back to the council on more than just one, one, one occasion. So that's just my thoughts, and I want to know, I respect yours, and you know that, but I will still be asking members that we move this forward. Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to, to echo the, the thanks to you for your work on this, and to just commend Mr. Harris-Dawson for his words earlier today. I thought you spoke particularly powerfully and eloquently about the need for social equity. It's going to be complicated, and it's going to be hard, and it's going to be groundbreaking that we're doing it. It's going to be a very difficult thing, but it is the right path to be walking down. And I'm proud to be part of a council that's taking a, a lead on that. It's extremely important, as it is in pedestrian safety matters and so many other matters, where we've had historic imbalance or injustices in this city. I'm, I'm glad to hear, Mr. Wesson, that you intend to bring this back here a couple more times. I do think, as Mr. Krikorian said, the body needs to delve deep into the details of this. There's, there's a few of, of your motions, Mr. Krikorian, that I'm, I'm particularly intrigued by, the local hiring, the, the labeling of edibles and a few of those things that I think are very important for us to look at. But this is an important step forward today. I support us moving forward, so we have more to react to from the city attorney's office. And I couldn't help think, as Mr. Buscagino reminded me this morning, that if, if, if Mr. Rosendahl were alive, this is the vote he would be most happy to be taking. This would be a, a very happy day for him, because he, he pushed for this for a very long time.
Mr. Corret?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm excited that we're getting to this point, especially for me, because I've been involved in this issue for almost 33 years, since the AIDS crisis first hit the city of West Hollywood, which I represented starting in the 80s. It's, it's been difficult to attempt to regulate this issue, especially in the earlier times. It needed to be made vague. I was the principal co-author of SB 420. That was a very imperfect measure, but it was as perfect as, as we thought it could be. It needed to be vague, because almost anything you did would generate opposition. The same was true with Measure D, which Bill Rosendahl and I authored together. And again, it wound up having a lot of flaws, but it was less flawed than what would have been happening without it. It was, it was a necessary step forward, but with all the legal questions and all the back and forth, it was, it was difficult to make the kind of progress we're making now. We've had some measures passed by the voters. That gives us some advantages, so we're not being advised that we can't offer permits. Now we're in a position where we have to get permits, which is much, 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 much better. I think we're moving in the right direction. I think the real key is what comes back from the city attorney, and how much time we have to respond to it. I probably have not agreed with Mr. Fewer or any of our city attorneys during this process on everything. I would really want to take a good look at it. I suspect... I suspect there will be some things we will want to amend when it comes back. So I'd ask the president and the council to be sure that we get enough time to take a good look at it and respond to it and make sure this is as good a program and an ordinance as it possibly can be.
Mr. Rue?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everything that needs to be said has been said. I just wanted to ask a quick question about Amendment 9A, item number 25, where it says, authorize the city attorney with assistance of Department of Cannabis Regulation and the Chair of Rules to make any technical modifications and/or legal corrections to the draft ordinances, draft resolutions, draft ordinance requests, and any other related actions listed above in order to further the objectives as described in these recommendations. It's my understanding it's more of a technical corrections, but I want to make sure that any corrections or ordinances that are drafted, that it will come back to council.
Yeah, this motion will come back. This is basically to engage, well, first of all, the city attorney's office has been with us every step of the way at every hearing. This is to have them begin the actual drafting so we can bring a document back to you that you can read, and then you can make various recommendations to the Rules Committee that will constantly review this, and then to council when it returns to council.
So any technical corrections will eventually, will come back to council?
Yes, all corrections.
Okay.
All corrections.
Then I'm fine with that. And actually, I had a clarification on Amendment 9H, but I heard it's, are you grouping them? Are they going to go back to committee?
Yeah, I'm going to request that Items 9C through 9I go back to the Rules Committee.
Then I'm fine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez? Oh, wait, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is anyone from planning here by any chance, anyone from the planning department? I know this is not a planning issue, but just a point of clarification, really, the question I have in relation to the motion and Item 1 is, is the PCN process envisioned in the rules and regulations less or more restrictive or exactly the same as the PCN process for alcohol? Because that is in...
Well, it's my understanding, Mr. O'Farrell, that it is slightly more restrictive, and that is, we're going to hear all of the planning. Is this on the 20th? On the 20th of November, so we'll be afforded the opportunity to get the exact question. But this was inserted so that the council members would be given the opportunity to personally be engaged. And it's my understanding that this is, will be a tad more restrictive.
To Mr. Krikorian's question, though, we are giving our blessings for a draft ordinance.
Yes.
But you're suggesting that on the 20th, we'll be able to refine this even further before it comes back to council?
In committee, no, no, no. In committee on the 20th.
Right.
And then when we, I'll bring it back when the document is ready to be brought back. What we have historically done, those of you that have been around know that, when there's a big issue that I deal with, I bring it back so that we have a couple of opportunities as a council, a couple of bites at the apple. So that will be my intention to do that.
Okay, so you're saying that you're going to bring this back in the draft, back again before final adoption?
Well, I want to see what happens on the 20th, but again, the members of the council, as always, will be afforded the opportunity to weigh in on it. And I will make sure that we get the specific answer to that question. We just do not have the planning people here at this point.
Okay, because I'll support this, but I share Mr. Krikorian's concern in that I'm very comfortable supporting this, should it come back to council first before a final adoption. I would support that process, and I'll support this moving forward based on that expectation.
Okay. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, as you know, I am a known skeptic, if not an opponent, to a lot of this cannabis operations and its regulations from the very beginning that I got here. And it's not over moral issues about the use of marijuana, or it's not because I oppose sick people from getting their medical marijuana because it eases their pain. It has absolutely nothing to do with that. But four years ago, when I got here, my district was inundated with illegal operators. And it's taken literally four years of my staff time to compose lists and help the city attorney's office and LAPD crack down on the illegal operators. And Mr. Weiser, you know that you and I also worked on the issue of BTRCs and not issuing them to illegal operators four years ago. So we have that in common. We know the ramifications of not being able to set regulations in place and how out of control this all can become, especially for communities like ours. You know, when you have a city as big as Los Angeles with 4 million people and the majority of cannabis retail stores happen to be in communities of colors, what do you call that? It's inequitable, and it's not okay. Similar to when in the 90s, Mr. Harris-Dawson, we worked really hard to ensure that alcohol outlets and billboard advertisement was something that was going to be curtailed and that we were going to be able to push this out of our communities because we dealt with the ramifications of what alcohol and over-concentration of these outlets did to our families and to our children. This isn't any different, ladies and gentlemen. This is something that the voters of California have approved, and I can accept that. But it's our responsibility to ensure that communities of colors do not get inundated with the cultivation, retail, and manufacturing of this product. It is not okay that almost 4 million people live here and that the majority of the people who don't look like me happen to go and shop for their marijuana in my district. That is not okay, and it's not acceptable. And this is why, Mr. President, you and I had talked about having a conversation about putting a hard cap on the amount of retailers and manufacturers and cultivators that come into districts like mine. All you have to do is look at these maps, and you will see my district, and everything that's shaded in blue is the majority of my district is composed of industrial and commercial areas, Mr. Buscagno. We share the same passion about this. Where do you think this is going to go? Into my district? So that's why I ask colleagues that you support an amendment to use the same process that we do for alcohol outlets, that we use a public convenience and necessity process to be able to equitably distribute retail stores and cultivations and manufacturers so that everyone in this city who wants to purchase marijuana can do so. But they don't have to come to Van Nuys or Sun Valley because that's not acceptable. And if you're driving to go drop some of this stuff off, you also shouldn't have to be, my district shouldn't be the center, the epicenter of the distribution of this product. Again, this has nothing to do with my moral issues on marijuana. It has to do with the fact that since I've been here, and I've grown up here my entire life, my district has been the dumping ground for everything else that the rest of the city of Los Angeles doesn't want to deal with, and that is simply not acceptable. So if you want to talk about equity, let's make sure other communities that look a little different than mine also have their ability to walk across the street and purchase their marijuana or get it dropped off by a driver. That's all I'm asking, members, is that if we're going to talk about social justice, if we're going to talk about being equitable in this city, let's really do it and stop talking about it so that we can ensure that my kids, when they walk to school, don't have to walk in front of 100 outlets that sell marijuana because other communities simply don't want it, and land use and property values in my district just happen to be more convenient for you to sell this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and I want to thank all of the members for your participation in this discussion today. So, Madam Clerk, where are we? So do I need to say that I want to send Items 9C through 9I to Rules, but that we vote on Item 9 as amended by 9A and be accompanied with Mr. Englander's amendment?
Correct.
Okay, so then, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, 1 no.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us where?
That takes council to Item 6 or Item 7. On Item 7, a substitute motion has been posted and circulated for council's consideration. Two votes are required on that item.
Okay, well, what's the first vote on 7?
The first vote is whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
And now we actually vote on the...
On the substitute motion itself.
All right, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, let's go to Item 6.
And on Item 6, amending motion 6A has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. So we're moving to adopt the Budget and Finance Report as amended by 6A. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Item 3 was called special by Councilmember Bonin.
Okay, Mr. Bonin on Item 3.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just had a couple of questions for the city attorney. City attorney could come up? You're done.
Or Mr. Englander, I should, Mr. Englander, did you want to go first on this 3? Mitchell?
Do you want to go first?
Item 3 is your item. Did you want to go first, or are you comfortable with letting Mr. Bonin?
I'm comfortable with letting Mr. Bonin.
Okay, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to LAPD and city attorney for coming to the table. Just had a couple of questions on this. There's two different sort of public expression items that the ACLU has concerns with. I have deeper concerns with the other one, but I had a few questions on this one. And I think it boils down to the definition of something. This prohibits certain materials at demonstrations, rallies, protests, picket lines, and public assemblies. What constitutes a public assembly?
I believe that a public assembly is covered by one of our existing ordinances, Section 103-111, as well as any assemblage of two or more persons gathered together to engage in any sort of activity that's covered by the ordinance.
So I had read the letter from the ACLU, and one of the concerns they stated was that this would prohibit certain materials at a demonstration that were not prohibited elsewhere. But you're saying these would be prohibited at all other public assemblies as well, not just political demonstrations?
Certainly not just any political demonstration. It would be any gathering that is subject to Item, to 103-111 and any of our other ordinances that regulate conduct.
So I was concerned by the issue they raised, but as I read through the list specifically in the ordinance, I was actually more concerned that some of the materials or items listed were not being prohibited elsewhere. So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about that. The items in question, would they be prohibited at a farmer's market?
They would likely not be prohibited at a farmer's market.
Why not?
Well, they might be prohibited at a farmer's market if that event classified was classified under the municipal code section. The municipal code section was enacted by this council all the way back in 1978, and it has been on the books, 5507, has been on the books since that time. In 2003, it was subject to constitutional challenge. The question and the issue isn't necessarily whether something is not prohibited at a non-expressive event versus an expressive event. The question is whether the restrictions and the prohibitions that are set forth in 5507 meet the constitutional scrutiny. So are they vague? Are they overbroad? Do they meet intermediate scrutiny?
I understand that part. My concern was, I read through the list and things like bear repellent, tasers, stun guns, and an ice pick. I've been to many, many demonstrations in my life, so I want to feel safe. I bring my son. I want him to be safe. I don't want there to be an ice pick or someone throwing gasoline or anything like that. But I'm equally concerned if we're prohibiting them at a demonstration, but we're not prohibiting them at a street festival or a block party or a farmer's market or an outdoor concert. Why, if the definition of public assembly is two or more people, why are those things, many of which are permitted by the city, not covered by this?
Well, I think because the facts and the evidence that have been set forth by the police department support some sort of regulation or restriction during certain events because the last 12 months unfortunately have demonstrated that there is a significant use of some of these items that aren't inherently weapons at such events to inflict great injury on participants, on law enforcement. That is where the evidence and the support lies. They aren't inherently weapons. It is the context in which those weapons have, those items have been used as weapons. And as I just pointed out, our existing ordinance withstood a judicial challenge back in 2003 against a First Amendment challenge. And at the time, the existing ordinance simply prohibited a certain dimension of wood. And the same argument could be made that walking around with a 2x4 isn't inherently unlawful, and it isn't prohibited by this city. But the city has prohibited in the context of these types of events because there is evidence to demonstrate their use as weapons to inflict great injury.
I just, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the idea that we need this standard for a demonstration or a picket, but we don't need it for other public gatherings. I mean, the ACLU has pointed out that they didn't think that was a fair standard. I assumed when I read "public assembly" that it covered all public assemblies. And when you answered my first question, you said "a gathering of two or more people." What's the distinction? Because I understand your distinction about where the facts have been found to draw a distinction between political demonstrations and a block party, but where is the legal distinction between a political demonstration and a block party or a street festival or a concert under the term of "public assembly"?
Well, as it currently exists, we have 5507, which prohibits a certain dimension of wood or wood lath, and we have other public gatherings such as a farmer's market where they receive a permit from the city. And under that permit, oftentimes a permit will allow an individual to engage in conduct or maintain items that perhaps in the absence of a permit, they would not be allowed to maintain, such as the stanchions and other things intended to erect, a table, you know, other things like that.
Okay, so the operators, but what about the attendees of the farmer's market?
They would likely be subject under this ordinance.
They would be subject?
Yes.
People, if somebody was walking around a block party with an ice pick or a stun gun, is that prohibited by this ordinance?
It would depend on whether or not the item was, fell within, not the item so much, but the event in question fell within the type of event that was covered by this particular ordinance.
I know, and that's what I'm asking about. Is a block party or a street festival, the Abbott-Kinney Street Festival, or a cancer fundraiser that closes down San Vicente in my district, does that meet the standard of a public assembly where you couldn't walk around with bear repellent or an ice pick?
I would need to look back at the existing ordinance to determine whether there have been either any definition set forth in our municipal code or in the case law that's interpreted it to cover a public assemblage.
Mr. Bonin, you way over time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
Press your button again. Before I go to the next speaker, let me go to Mr. Englander as the maker of this.
And I think it may help this conversation to understand from the city attorney and from the police department in terms of implementation of this ordinance. We already have an ordinance that we've had on the books for a number of years that has withstood challenge.
That's correct.
But I think the implementation, which is something that hasn't been asked, or answered, or covered under announcing and/or postings and/or warnings, which you did a great job in committee in sharing how this would be implemented at such events, rather than just having a citywide ordinance prohibiting these items at these type of gatherings, there's a whole other element to it. So if you can explain that a little bit, and maybe get into the spirit of the law versus letter to the law, but more importantly, how this, the implementation would work.
Sure. The ordinance, the draft ordinance in front of you itself requires that notice be provided. And, and perhaps that goes to your question, Councilmember Bonin, because to the extent that, that there are items that aren't inherently weapons, but that have been improvised and used as weapons repeatedly over the last number of months, the ordinance itself requires that a warning be issued. And it also requires that that can take place in the form of either signage, if, if the location of the activity is known ahead of time, or verbally, or through some sort of loudspeaker. And I believe at Public Safety, there was a discussion about how enforcement of the terms of the ordinance would certainly not be undertaken unless and until such time as a warning was provided, and an opportunity to, to become compliant. That, that is what distinguishes our ordinance from other ordinances. And actually, within the context of our ordinance, we have engaged in further reflection and consideration of all of the constitutional concerns and issues that may or may not have been adequately addressed by other municipalities. For instance, we have provided examples where examples are available. We have, we have crafted the ordinance in a way, and worked very closely with the police department to ensure that the items that are listed in the ordinance are not items for which there is speculation that they might be used or could be used, but that in fact, they have been used. And, and not only just a single time, we're not looking at a one-off. We're looking at multiple occasions in which the items set forth in here have been utilized to inflict injury on participat- participants and law enforcement. So in many ways, this particular ordinance addresses and considers many of the things that perhaps make other cities' ordinances and other cities' rules weak, vague, subject to challenge. Within the context of this particular ordinance, we are looking at whether it provides adequate direction, we are looking at whether it is overly broad, and we are looking at whether or not it meets the constitutional standard for items perhaps that are involved in one's expressive activities. And the city attorney's office has transmitted this ordinance and believes that it meets those constitutional challenges. The items that are set forth in the ordinance, it's important to understand and recognize that those items are used as weapons. So to, which distinguishes the inclusion in other cities' ordinances and rules of items that perhaps are not utilized as weapons, but which are utilized to protect oneself against some sort of involvement or intervention by a law enforcement officer or agency. This ordinance includes specific examples. This ordinance is not based on conjecture or speculation. It's based on the evidence that has been provided by the police department in the form of testimony, as well as written evidence into the council file. It is, it is designed and intended to permit the participants of an event from being harmed to, to whatever degree is possible by the possession of certain items that have lost their innocent characteristics and unfortunately become weaponry. So in that instance, we believe that our ordinance is stronger than the, some of the other cities that have sought to do this, as well as the, the notion that you can prohibit something when used at one of these types of activities, different than perhaps its allowance or prohibition not at one of these activities, has already been vetted by the Ninth Circuit, and has already been determined to be valid so long as there is evidence and so long as it meets the constitutional standard. And we believe that the ordinance before you has done that successfully.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Rafish, Captain Frank, thanks for your work on this. And as you know, in committee, when you reported on this, on this ordinance, that I support the intent. I'm more comfortable with the justification based on my line of questioning at committee last week. Could you again state for the record, my, my primary concern is those who are choosing to attend a First Amendment rights march or any other type of public assembly within the First Amendment, being unwittingly unaware of certain banned items that to most people seem fairly innocent, right? Because some of these items are understandably on this list because of the violence that we've seen perpetuated since Donald Trump took office. I just want to be very frank about that. My concern remains that someone attends one of these marches and they bring in a one-by-two sign with two ends, and we know that a one-by-two piece of wood is one of the prohibited objects. And a lot of huge signs show up at these marches that either on a, on a plastic pole, or a one-by-two, or even a one-by-four. And can you take us again through the process of what the enforcement would be? My concern is the whole charge with misdemeanor. And the irony of ironies would be that someone who's undocumented comes to a First Amendment immigration rights march and gets charged with a misdemeanor, and they are perfectly innocent. They just happen to bring the wrong banned piece of material. And they get ensnared in this nightmarish situation that could lead to their deportation. I know that's the worst-case scenario. You assured me in committee last week in terms of what the first step is in terms of confiscation before being charged with anything. Could you take us through that again?
I, I would defer to Chief Frank, because I think he answered your question, committee.
Councilman, good morning, good morning, everyone. Councilman, we certainly appreciate the concerns that you have. And as we indicated back in committee, one of the things that this ordinance provides is that everyone is going to be given a warning. Everyone's going to be warned. It is certainly not our intent, recognize the fact that there are going to be individuals who are going to attend these marches with items that would normally be considered innocuous, but certainly what we've seen over the last eight months or so is that people are misusing these items. So we're going to be giving them a warning, and we're going to give them an opportunity to either leave the area with the item if they want to keep it, or give the item to us, which we'll take, which we'll take possession of. If the person refuses to do so, then at that point, the person will be advised of the arrest for a misdemeanor, and we will process that arrest the way we do any other misdemeanor arrests. The intent, one of the things that we're going to be working very closely with the city attorney's office is to ensure that we comply with the spirit of intent and, and the spirit of the law and the intent of the law. And this is certainly not to go after the person who is just going through, going through the area with one of these items. Our officers are going to be taking the same standard in terms of reasonable suspicion that the person at the location with the item, they're going to have to satisfy, that the officer's going to have to satisfy that they meet that criteria of reasonable, expect, reasonable, reasonable suspicion that the person is engaging in the activity. Again, we're going to work very closely with the city's, city attorney's office. And when, at these events, we're actually going to have a city attorney representative within the command post with us to go through that, that, go through that process. So this is not something that we're going to take very lightly, Councilman, and I can certainly assure you of that.
I appreciate that, I, I have a level of comfort now with that. And I wholeheartedly support banning materials that could be used as a weapon, that's a no-brainer. And most of the things on the list are, you know, kind of raise your eyebrow on, why on earth would someone innocently want to bring one of these items? It's the somewhat small universe of the gray area that had me concerned. But I appreciate the process as you've explained it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman, and thank you to the Public Safety Committee. Seeing what's happened in the United States since the dawn of Donald Trump, and not waiting for us to fall prey to that here in Los Angeles, they've stepped ahead and tried to come up with something. As someone who spent a lot of my life protesting, I have a couple of questions and a couple of concerns about what is before us today. I'm happy to see that what was in committee I was extremely concerned about, and that was gas masks, which are completely defensive tools, are not in the final, are not in what is before us today. So I'm, was very heartened to see that. As someone who attends protests a lot, you, safety is a big, big concern. I think it's a right, our right as an American to be able to go to a protest, to take our children to a protest. In fact, I think it's really our responsibilities, and so safety is a big, big concern. What troubles me about this is, from what I've read and what I have heard this morning, it seems to me as if political speech is being singled out and having more restrictions put on it than non-political speech. And so I'll give you an example. The most dangerous public assembly I've been to is like one we're probably going to have a couple of days from now when the Dodgers win the World Series. When the Lakers have won the championship, I've been scared to death about what's going to happen in that melee, right? Much more so than I have been at any political rally. And so it, it would trouble me if we're making rules for the political speech, and this kind of speech is just left uncommented on in, in this regard. And, you know, something as simple as carrying a picket sign, I'd be very concerned that while I'm in the process of drawing, you know, a pretty sign with a catchy phrase that's going to get people's attention, I got to break out a tape measure and measure the stick that I'm going to put the picket sign on. I mean, that just seems wholly un-American, to put it, to put it frankly. And so I, I wanted to get clarification on this, and it kind of goes to what Bonin is saying. Are we making special rules that are more restrictive for political speech than we have for other types of public gatherings?
No, we're not. This ordinance would apply to the Dodger parade as well. And, and the gathering, assuming we have a Dodger parade, and the gathering, gatherings such as that, it would also apply. It is actually completely content neutral to the extent that whether you are protesting something, whether you are demonstrating for or against something, whether you are gathered together to celebrate something, it would still apply. And that's a very serious concern. Because what that would do is that would change the nature of this ordinance from being content neutral to being content-based, and would subject it to an completely different standard of review. That, that is not the case. My understanding, my belief is certainly that, and I believe that Chief Frank spoke about this at Public Safety, that were that parade or assembly to occur, this ordinance would have application to that in the same way that it would apply to a political rally, to, to anything, to any sort of rally, demonstration, protest, assemblage, anything like that, it would apply. And I just wanted to add that we agree that having the ability to express your message to an intended audience is of utmost importance. And that's one of the ways that this ordinance is distinguished from other ordinances and other cities' approaches, which is, there have been other cities that have actually prohibited any sort of signage unless it's handheld. And we, we have undertaken a great, serious review of that, and of an individual's ability to reach their intended audience when they need to hoist that sign up in the air, or they need to hoist that puppet up in the air, which has significant and expressive value. And this ordinance takes that into account as well. It allows for wood meeting certain dimensions. It allows for plastic meeting certain dimensions, so that that expression can occur and reach the widest audience permissible under the law.
Thank you, and just one last thing, I think it was buried in my comment. Did, and anybody on the committee could answer this, or you all can answer it. When you all were crafting this, this proposal, did you consult with or talk to anybody who's in, who protests on a regular basis? Or has this been wholly a public safety conversation?
This, I believe, was a motion that was acted upon and adopted by the city council. And the city attorney's office has worked with the police department in that regard, and looked at existing case law and, and other cities to determine how, how best to protect that activity on a going-forward basis.
I don't know, Councilman, would my kids count?
No, they don't count.
Okay, Mr. Kukory? You're going to pass, Mr. Bonin?
Thanks, sorry to press my button and rise again, but I'm, I'm still trying to get a bit of a clarification on what constitutes a public assembly. I was gratified to hear that there's not apparently a distinction between a May Day march and rally and a Dodgers victory march and rally. That's a good thing. Would this also then apply to attendees at the Abbott Kenny Street Festival, or the Central Ave Jazz Festival, or a movie night in Mr. Englander's district?
It, it would likely apply to those, just not the individuals who sought the permits to engage in those activities, because they may or may not have received some sort of exception in order to erect the, the item that they have to erect to engage in.
I apologize for being a pain in the butt here, but you're asking me to vote on something with, with potentially constitutional consequences, and you said it would likely apply. I, I'm looking for some certainty here.
That's because historically, this particular section has been applied in the context of activities that have been regulated and permitted by the Board of Police Commissioners, expressive activities. But a parade and an assembly is the same. So if someone were going to engage in expressive activity at one of the events that you've suggested, like a farmer's market, they would be subject to this ordinance. The folks setting up the table to just, to sell the candles, or whatever it is they're selling, may or may not be subject to that, because they're not engaged in activity that is covered by the ordinance, historically covered by the ordinance.
Let me, because now you're, you're sending me back again.
Okay.
Is, you're saying that someone who goes to the Mar Vista Farmer's Market, who wants to protest the Trump administration, and use that opportunity to protest the Trump administration, cannot carry a stun gun, or an ice pick, or bear repellent? Totally get it. But anybody else who's going, just to, to buy some apples or mushrooms, they can bring those materials with them?
The validity of the ordinance is premised on its historical need and use. And, and there is nothing inherently unconstitutional about distinguishing between individuals who are engaged in this expressive activity from individuals who are not, if in fact, the governmental agency has a significant governmental interest and purpose that is forwarded by that particular rule or law. And that is what is presented here. Like I said, it has been on the books as far back as the 70s, and has been affirmed in this distinction between, the perfect example is, is the case law of the Ninth Circuit that distinguishes between you possessing a two-by-four as you walk down the street, and possessing it when you attend one of these events. And so some of it goes to proof that you are in fact attending or participating.
So I, I asked if this would apply to one of the movie nights in Mr. Englander's district, and you said likely yes. But what I'm now hearing is it would only apply if you, if you were attending that movie night in order to engage in a free expressive activity, and not if you were going for any other purpose?
The ordinance, as far back as when it was originally drafted, provides as follows. You have to be attending or participating in one of the events. If you happen to just walk by, the officer, in order to take enforcement action, has to be able to articulate reasonable suspicion to stop you, or probable cause to arrest you or cite you for a violation of this, of this particular ordinance. And this particular ordinance requires your attendance in or participation in. And there is nothing inherently unconstitutional where the government has articulated a significant need in one context that does not exist in the other context. So it becomes a factual issue.
I'm, I'm trying very, very hard to get to a yes on this, and...
Me too.
And it's not because I don't think that we should be prohibiting these items, is I'm not comfortable with the legal distinction we're making, which from everything I'm hearing tells me that if I'm going to the Abbott-Kenny Street Festival and I plan on protesting Donald Trump or Barack Obama, I can't have items that the person walking down next to me can. I think that the bear repellent and the ice pick should be prohibited for everybody who goes to the street festival. And I'm troubled by the fact that we're making that distinction. And it just, I know we're going to get into a dispute with the ACLU over this. I don't think we have a very good track record in getting into disputes with the ACLU. And I just think that the distinction we're making for a public safety benefit doesn't hold up if we're saying that if I'm walking down the street with Mr. Bruscaino and I intend on protesting, and he's just going to the same event without intending on protesting, I don't understand how we make that distinction. I just don't.
Well, that distinction was actually upheld by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals in 2003, because at the time, our ordinance itself distinguished between the possession of certain items at certain events and the same item when you're not at one of those events. And the Ninth Circuit applied the intermediate scrutiny standard to determine whether our ability to create that distinction was lawful, and we believe that the same analysis would be applied here. And so, it may come down to a factual issue of whether someone is attending and participating, or whether someone is not. But that distinction has been upheld by the Ninth Circuit.
Mr. Bonin, you're out of time, I'm sorry.
One last thing, just to wrap up. If this were prohibiting ice picks and bear repellent and stun guns at a kid's soccer game and a movie night, as well as at a political demonstration, I'd be fine with it, because I think we should be banning those things at all of those things. This just doesn't go far enough.
Mr. Englander?
Just to close, colleagues, and bless you. To me, this is just common sense. These are items that shouldn't be at these type of events, but I think the implementation that you brought forward, that you explained thoroughly, that just is not going to be a blanket application, that there has to be fair warning, there has to be notice, there has to be reasonable suspicion, or probable cause to even effectuate an arrest to stop somebody from doing something like this in the first place, and they have to have articulable facts to back that up before either taking that property and/or writing that person's citation or effectuating an arrest. So, it's not just looking at a prohibited items list and the fact that we've already had this on the books for so long. This is just expanding that. And actually, with the notification requirements and strengthening that, I think giving us better footing than we had where we already won in court on this years ago. So, I thank you for that. I ask for your eye vote. I think this is common sense, and it was very well thought out with the community and outreach into a lot of number of folks on this. So, I appreciate all the questions and concerns, but I see no reason to ever have to bring these items to any types, any one of these events, whether it be a farmer's market and/or any type of protest. One last thing. Public events oftentimes already prohibit all these items at most of our public events. In fact, any public event that's on private property, Staples Center, farmer's markets, the ones that my district are at actual shopping malls that prohibit it because it's private property, open to the public, but they can prohibit whatever they want, and most of these items are prohibited. So, this is just merely an extension, a reasonable extension on common sense that makes sense. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
Okay, thank you. That item passes. We're going to go ahead and go into general public comment. Josefina McCoy, are you here? Josefina McAvoy?
Yeah.
I don't see that person in the audience. Jacqueline Richardson, are you here? Come on up, ma'am.
Identify.
While Ms. Richardson comes up, can we, Mr. Blumenfield, you had, Blumenfield, you had a...
Six A. We had to reconsider to make a technical thing, and I wanted to make a quick statement about...
Six A?
On six, yes.
Okay. Item six for reconsideration. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That item's before us. Go ahead, Mr. Blumenfield.
Okay. On item six A, which we just reconsidered, I wanted to, first, I have to make a technical change, which is, it says "non-cash transactions for the sale or recreation of commercial cannabis." It should say "medical cannabis." It's a, that's the typo part. But I wanted to take the moment to tell you why this amendment is so important, and it's an issue I've been pushing for several months, and I feel like it's not getting its proper due, and I want to make sure just briefly, which is, I think that as we move toward cannabis regulation, we can take cash out of the system. And I put a motion in back in June about looking into the viability of a no-cash cannabis system. It was discussed in Budget Committee. Unfortunately, I don't feel like it was fully picked up in the report, which is why this amendment makes it absolutely clear, not only that we are instructing them to look at the viability of it, but asking the city attorney to have the language ready, because it is my intent that when this comes back for regulation, that we move forward and eliminate cash from our cannabis system. They do it in Hawaii. It has been done in other states. It frustrates me, we're spending all this money potentially in this item for extra security and personnel and finance, when all of that could be avoided, or a chunk of it could be avoided, if we actually went to a cashless system. We're already accepting non-cash payments through the Lynx card and some other cards. It is doable. It is real. It is something I intend on pursuing. This motion makes that possible. It doesn't require anything other than getting the report back and getting the language drawn up. So, that's why this language is being done, and I wanted to make it clear about it. So, thank you, and I urge an eye vote on this amendment and the underlying item.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Okay, that is before us as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, very good. So, Mrs. Richardson, go ahead. Sorry about that.
All immigrants coming to the United States should have papers, including the Russians. Everybody's after the Mexicans to have papers, the Russians in them also. The reason is, people want to make a good showing that they're good people, and they want to do the right thing if they want to remain here. Some Russian people have expressed interest in some of the problems that they're causing, such as the housing crisis. They were blamed by me for stealing all the money. They were blamed too by me for stealing civil service jobs. But two groups of people, there were young people under 30, and what these young boys under 30 said, "Well, if they're having a problem, I have no power. If you're having a problem, let us know, we'll help you solve the problems." The young girls, also under 30, said, "We'll help give some of the money back." I believe some of them came in here, were trying to give money back, but they didn't approach you. I believe everyone should have papers so they can help resolve problems.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred. The desk is clear. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. O'Farrell?
Happy Halloween, and for all of the families who are taking children to trick-or-treat, be very, very careful. Mind the cars on the streets. It's going to be dark and dangerous out there, so just really pay close attention as you're taking your children trick-or-treating.
Great advice, Mr. O'Farrell. Any other announcements, members? Seeing none, can we please all rise, including the members of the public? Out of respect, can we please rise for adjourned motions? To my left, are there any adjourned motions, Mr. Harris-Dawson? No adjourned motions? Seeing none on my left. On my right, Mr. Korets, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of a longtime constituent, although he had moved away for a short time recently, Bud Baikman, age 93, who died in his home at Riverbank, California, after a short battle with lymphoma. He was born in Huron, South Dakota, to Frank and Roberta Baikman, and he served in the Army from 1943 to 1946, obtained a BS in Electrical Engineering at South Dakota School of Mines, an MS at University of Illinois, and a Master's in Engineering at UCLA, class of 1962. While working at Hughes Aircraft in 1957, he met Carol Ann Berg, and they married in 1959. In 1964 and 66, daughters Lori and Debbie were born, and they moved to their home in Bel Air, where they would raise their family, entertain their friends, and enjoy 51 years. Bud began his career with Aerospace Corporation in 1965, working on many different projects over the next 51 years, retiring at the age of 92. Additionally, he was always very active in the Neighborhood Association and its causes. He served on the board of the Roscoe Valley Association, including serving as president, and was a strong voice on the Mall Hall and Advisory Committee. Bud and Carol Ann enjoyed traveling around the world and supporting the performing arts in Los Angeles. They moved to central California to be with their daughters in August of 2016, and were able to enjoy concerts and family time there. Carol Ann passed away unexpectedly in July 2017. They leave behind a lot of special memories to daughters Lori, Mary, Debbie, Debbie McLean, and grandsons Brennan and Derek, Mary, Leo McLean, beloved nieces, Mary and Roberta, grandnephew and niece Douglas and Rebecca. Services will honor both Bud and Carol Ann, and they will be held November 4th at 11:00 a.m. at the Congregational Church of the Times on Magnolia Boulevard in Sherman Oaks. And they, may they both rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Korets. Any other adjourned motions on my right? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.